Good evening to have a good Commissioner meeting and we want to begin by going to our Lord and thanking him for this day and asking him to continue his blessings upon our county. So would you join me in prayer? Father, thank you so much for loving us like you do, for promising us an eternal life with you through your son. You tell us in your word to praise your holy name and recognize who you are and we do that. We did that in our county last Thursday with the National Day of Prayer where it all began with governance declaring you as Lord. So we come to you with our stories today, for each of us have one. And we thank of you and praise you and welcome you to this meeting. And through praising and thanking you for who you are, we ask that you tell us in the word to come boldly before your throne and ask. For we know that your grace is sufficient. For your strength, Lord, comes very handy in our weakness and we are weak at times where we need to lean on you and only you. We ask for that direction this night, that all we say and do glorify you. We ask for wisdom, for directing the people of this county, your people, for you've ordained government a long, long time ago. So we're grateful that we're a free people, that we can worship, we can witness and have a relationship not only with you but with our fellow man. That you bless this meeting, that you bless these seven Commissioners and the County Manager and the Attorney and the Clerk and all the staff and all the ones that work, Lord, for others to serve this county and this community and this state and this country. We're just grateful that we can come together as people. And yes, Lord, try as hard as we can with your help to be as one. Bless this meeting tonight, Lord. Thank you again. For us in Christ Jesus, we pray. Amen. Mr. Kamarty, if you would lead us in the pledge and I believe you might have some guests.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I want to defer to our young scout to lead us in the pledge.
Legion's to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Kamarty. North Carolina General Statutes mandates that the Chairman shall inquire as to whether any member knows of any non-conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to the matters before the committee this evening. If any member knows of a conflict of interest or appearance of conflict, please state so at this time. Thank you. You have the minutes before you that have been sent in your package and have had a chance to look over those minutes. I'll need a motion on the floor that we approve the minutes from the April 5th and the April 16th meetings.
I'll make the motion, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Motion's on the floor. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. The adjustments to the agenda, we had our agenda preview at three o'clock. And are there any adjustments? I think there's an addition. Commissioner Mayo, you wish to make an addition to the agenda in the form of a resolution?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I want to add to the agenda, the resolution from the Wayne County Commissioners to our legislatures in Raleigh. In reference to the Charles V ACOG birthplace over in Fremont, that we want to support a resolution for the state to keep that facility open to the public along with the resolutions from Fremont, Pikeville, and New Rica.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. We'll add that to new business number nine, Charles V ACOG resolution. And we'll ask you, Mr. Mayo, at that time to read that. Thank you. Add that as number nine. The Appointment Committee, Mr. Mayo, Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
My goodness. That was at four fifteen. Did we just forego that now? Okay, it's four thirty five. Let's go ahead then. I apologize for us going a little over on our closed session, but there is a four fifteen public hearing at this time, so those who wish to speak at our... I'm sorry, that's not comments. This is public hearing on the proposed amendments for the Wayne County Code of Ordinance through the Wayne County Subdivision Ordinance. Like Mr. Price, County Price, our Planning Director, to come and give us a brief synopsis of this and then we'll have the public hearing on this matter.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Connie.
You've got before your request from the Planning Board that the subdivision ordinance be changed. It would reflect on the approval process of subdivision plots. Will involve parts of three sections. First, dealing with variances, adding to the current wording, the word that the Planning Board can approve variances, that they would all be able to approve those variances on plots that the Planning Director can give final approval on. Under final plot submission, section seventy, seventy-five, you'd be changing the wording for Planning Board actions and consideration to approval for certain minor plots. Those are the plots that are, do not involve new streets or less than three lots. Also, as a paragraph says, the Planning Director may give final approval to plots that meet certain minor subdivision requirements. The plots receiving Planning Director approval shall be limited to those that do not exceed two lots on a secondary road. Variance request must be approved by the Planning Board. Any future lots out of a tract that was in existence in nineteen ninety will require Planning Board approval. Also, on the submission procedure, it will add to the certificate where currently the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners signs the plots and will be giving the Planning Board or the Planning Director the option to sign the plot based on who's giving approval. And the Planning Board did review this and recommended approval.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Okay, with that said then, we'll open it up to public hearings. Those who wish to speak, come up to the podium, give us your name, your address, and phone Being that there's no one here for the public hearing, the public hearing, please. Thank you.
I'm kind of not new to this sort of stuff.
Your name and your address.
My name is Ingrid Nguyen. I'm at two twenty eight Kelly Springs Road.
I'm sorry, can't hear you?
I'm at two twenty eight Kelly Springs Road in Dudley, North Carolina.
And your name again?
Ingrid Nguyen.
Nguyen? Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I saw your notices about a month ago in papers, in newspapers, news articles. And I was wondering, when you said approve, what you mean? My husband died last, two thousand eleven, May, and I've got family heirs, the land is the Nguyen heirs. And I've got life estate, but what I'm... He had originally, after that, he had gotten a surveyor to re-survey that part, the park where we lived. And I was supposed to get two point five acre. And I don't know, recently there's adjusted, the lawyers adjusted it to one acre. I just want to know, I have life estate. I want to enjoy that until, you never know how long I'm going to live. I want to know if that's included and all the stuff that's going on.
Mr. Chairman, that was at the last meeting, we've already approved it, that's already been approved.
I said it's approved, but I said they're going to have some reconsiderations about it?
Not on that one, no ma'am, that's been approved. It's fully approved.
Okay, I'm going to look into it.
You have a life estate. Do you have an attorney that you could ask?
Yeah, yes.
Just call our county attorney, since this has already gone through the system, and get some assistance.
I've been trying to get in touch with her. She was out of town at the time, but she's in town now and she's trying to get estate attorney, but he's not in reply. And that's why I decided to come here today.
Any questioning on that? If your attorney would call our County Manager or County Planner, and certainly we would consult with our county attorney and make sure the transition was clear, the clarity of it.
She's still trying to find out from him because she sent me an email which had an attached, you know, for me, a copy for me.
Do you have a phone number that we could give you, please?
I'll talk to her first because she doesn't even know I'm here too, but I just thought I'd come and find out. But I can give you the number.
Yes, ma'am.
I hope you have it on me.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Mr. Price.
Chairman, I believe the plot that she was referring to was the one that approved at your last meeting, that you had the, there was a septic tank that was in the proposed easement and you wanted a note added to the plot that if they begin to use that easement, the septic tank would have to be moved first. And I think that's the plot she was referring to.
All right. Okay. Any other, anyone else who would wish to speak at the public hearing today? Being no one else wishes to speak at the public hearing, I now declare the public meeting, the public hearing closed. As we move on now with appointments, the Appointment Committee chaired by Commissioner Mayo.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If you would, it's pretty close to the front of your agenda book, if you would turn to the appointments and we're going to be working with the ones that are highlighted. Before we do that, I wanted to, I want to make a comment thanking, thanking all the citizens of Wayne County for putting in applications to serve on these thirty-eight committees that we have here in Wayne County as volunteers. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I went on WayneGov.com today and our changes have been made that we were talking about three or four weeks ago. When you go on citizen participation now, you get all thirty-eight committees that we're, that we are charged to appoint people to. They are listed, they read what their duties are, and if you click on that committee, it will give you a list of existing people that are serving, when they were appointed, and when their term is to expire. So I would like to thank Ms. Marshall Wilson, our clerk, has really...
Jeremy Catan.
Jeremy Catan, for doing this. It's going to make our application process for these committees and boards so much easier. So having said that, Mr. Chairman, our first, our first appointment this morning is the Wayne County Council on Aging. We have a reappointment of three that are eligible for reappointment, Ruth M. Hoffman, Nancy Hatch, and Ann Burnett. The committee, and I make that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we reappoint these three to the Wayne County Council on Aging.
Motion's on the floor that we reappoint Ms. Hoffman, Ms. Hatch, and Ms. Burnett to the Wayne County Council on Aging. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Then it's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the next one is the Wayne County ABC Board and the Appointment Committee is recommending Miles Kelly to be appointed to the Wayne County ABC Board, and I make that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. The motion's on the floor to appoint Miles Kelly to the ABC, Wayne County ABC Board. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Five, four, and Mr. John Bell against. I repeat these for radio people that are in, oh, we're radio, it's six one, I'm sorry. For those that are listening by radio, it's six, four, and one against. Mr. Bell. Mr. Mayo?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the turnover to the next highlighted board is the Wayne County Veterans Services Advisory Board. As you know, we've been working on this for several months. Commissioner Bill Pate is the Commissioner that's assigned to this board. And I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank the public and the veterans in particular for really stepping up to the plate and filling out applications to serve on these six vacancies. We have one veteran that's going to be appointed for each district, each Commissioner district, so we're going to have six members of this advisory board plus the Commissioner, Bill Pate. I want to, I want to give these all in a group, Mr. Chairman, all six, and we can vote on those all at one time. District one, which is, which is my district, Walter Joseph Marham is, is the veteran on this committee from District one. District two is Carl Grover, G-R-O-O-V-E-R. This is Mr. Akamartis, District two. District three is Joseph H. Lofton. This is District three, which is Mr. John Bell. And District four, Bill Carr, which is Chairman Steve King's district, District four. District five, Don Peters, that is Commissioner Bill Pate's district. And District six, Victor M. Miller, District six, which is Mr. Joe Daughtry's district. You got all those, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept these six to the Wayne County Veterans Services Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Motion's on the floor that we appoint Mr. Marham, Mr. Grover, Mr. Joe Lofton, Mr. Bill Carr, Mr. Don Peters, and Mr. Victor Miller to the Wayne County Veterans Services Advisory Board. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pate.
I just wanted to restate what Ms. Mayo said. We could only appoint six, we'd love to appoint more, and we appreciate the veterans in this community standing up and filling out these applications and I'm going to be proud to serve with these guys and just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pate. Any other comments? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? It's unanimous, approval. Ms. Mayo?
Mr. Chairman, that's all the appointments we have for today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Board of Commissioners Committee reports, Mr. Kamarty.
After our last meeting, I've only, on one of my committees met, and that's been the Library Committee, we met on four sixteen as our regular meeting and had a call meeting on five sixteen thirteen. And of course, it has to do with, number one, unfinished business and very good meeting and very productive and we're looking forward to progress.
Thank you, Mr. Kamarty. Mr. Pate?
I'll try to be quick, but I've had a lot of meetings during the month. Met with the Department of Social Services and we spoke mostly about budget. And one big thing that came out of that was the six hundred thousand dollars of unfunded mandates that have been pushed down on the county. Met with Tourism Board, tax collections were down about twenty-one point three percent from last year. And they also talked, we talked about pigging the park, where thirty-two thousand dollars was raised, sixty-seven, six to seven thousand people attended. There was some parking problems and there's a consideration to move to a different site next year. I hope that doesn't happen. We talked about Cycle NC, which will happen in October third, fourth, we'll have like fifteen hundred cycles that'll come to Goldsboro, they'll be spending the night, they'll be coming from Holly Springs and headed to New Bern, which is money, brings money to the county. The tennis tournaments will be coming in October, it's going to last for five days, they'll be on forty-eight courts in the county and Snow Hill. And we went and visited ACOG birthplace and got to hear the Secretary of Cultural Resources speak and we, we supported a recommendation here, a resolution shortly on that, to try to keep that up and not let it go dark. Met with Old Waynesboro, which was some of the same discussions about pigging the park and events that will happen, Cub Scouts, some other event. And we're even going to have a paranormal group that wants to come out and set up infrared cameras. Maybe we'll find the ghosts and bring a whole house of tourism to the county, who knows? Met with the Works Board, we're still leading in the state with the number of CRCs and Guilford County is next in that. There's a poll that's been up and that employers can use now to list their job listings and people can actually go, also go in there and list their applications, which you can match up and, you know, would be able to see people who've already had CRCs. I think NC Manufacturing has used that and actually has hired someone, is that correct?
That's correct.
And finally, last Thursday night, I met with the East County Workforce Development Board, talked there, was mostly about integration of services, which is combining different agencies and trying to streamline some dollars, which is a good thing. And that's my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pate. Mr. ACOG?
I don't have a whole lot to report today. I was not present at the last Commissioners' meeting. Have met several times with OES. Think I'd be safe to report that our morale in that department is up considerably. Had some good comments from several of employees. Have a couple of things that we're going to bring up at the next Commissioners' meeting. Did meet with Solid Waste when they were working on their budget. We're not in the red in that department, so that's good. That's all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. ACOG. Mr. Bell?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one quick comment about East Point. East Point right now is on the verge of trying to increase their number of counties. We don't know what the state is going to do about that. They want to cut the LMEs down from, MCOs down from eleven to three to cover the whole state. They're also trying to cut the, thinking about cutting the mental health dollars, which is Medicaid. And I'm afraid that if all these cuts go through, our local jails are going to be overcrowded more so than what they are right now because these people are going to be on the street, no play, no treatment. And if you have any contact with any of your legislators, you need to talk to them about that demographic of people. That is very important to try to get them the proper treatment that they deserve. So thinking about three MCOs covering the whole state, that's going to be very difficult. It'll be the third or fourth reorganization that we've had in the past six or seven years. So those people that work in mental health, they don't know which way to turn because of all the cuts and all the changes coming down. So talk to your legislators. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Mr. Daughtry?
Mr. Chairman, we continue to work on pushing I-795. And I'm happy to report that the Goldsboro MBO met and passed a resolution unanimously supporting the extension of seven ninety-five down to forty, that we want to make one of our primary projects to see that it comes to fruition. And I do want to report an interesting trip that I had on the sheriff's helicopter. We were able to get out on the helicopter and view our county, and it is a very, very large county, and see the construction of our highways, especially on seventy. We viewed a great deal of it and I learned an interesting thing. I have a fear of heights. You know, it's one thing to see a helicopter, but when you sit in that backseat and there's no door there, it is a confounding experience. But anyway, I want to thank the sheriff for that visit. And I also want to point out, want to make sure everyone understands that the helicopter is provided to the citizens of this community, of Wayne County, at no cost to the county taxpayers. And that's just amazing when you go and see that out at the airport. We now have two helicopters, is that correct? And all of that, all of the maintenance, all of the cost is all borne by those dollars that our illustrious sheriff goes out and gets.
It does not cost any dollars to our tax base. So I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
Well, when I went up, Mr. Daughtry, I thought we were going to go up and look at marijuana.
But I want to thank you for doing that and thank all the Commissioners. Mr. Bell said he had done enough of that in Vietnam. And Mr. Kamarty, you're still welcome.
Thank you, Sheriff, but not right now.
Mr. Mayo?
Well, I was fine with Commissioner Daughtry. Had those safety handles.
White knuckles.
Those safety handles, his knuckles were white. He had those things grabbed, but we had a good time, didn't we?
We did.
Okay. I just, I have, I need about forty-five minutes to just talk about facilities, that's all.
I believe that's some of that unfinished business.
Yeah, okay. We, of course, have had a lot of meetings with facilities over the last few weeks. We've been to a lot of different meetings. I was not able to attend the WCDA last month in the eastern region because I was sick. So I'm planning on going this month. One of the things that is a little bit out of, not under committees, but the Budget Department presentations over the last three, four, five days last week, we heard from every department in this county as far as their budget and what they do. The ones that I sat in on, and of course, I didn't sit in on all of them, but it was very, very enlightening as to what each department does in our county, how it operates, how it's run. A lot of dedicated employees. If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to cross over just a minute and talk in my comments because I've got quite a few comments. One of the things that we did on April twenty-fourth is that we as Commissioners went out to the Lee Combined Cycle Plant for ribbon cutting. And you know, that is a tremendous facility. We here in Wayne County are very fortunate to have that facility here in our county. It has enough power to furnish seven hundred and fifty-six thousand homes. It's nine hundred and twenty megawatts. But here's the key, the investment of nearly seven hundred and fifteen million dollars, which really helps our tax base. On April twenty-fourth, we also, as Commissioners, went down to Greenville to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners District Meeting. And a lot of, a lot of it was about the General Assembly, you know? Where are we now was the question asked. We talked about county legislative goals. The last thing I'll mention and... We talked about county legislative goals. The, the last thing I'll mention, and I'll cover the rest during, during my comments, is that the, on May second was, was National Prayer Day here in, across our country. And a lot of us Commissioners, most of us, all of us, I think, were, were participating in a time when we prayed for our county, our state, and our country. I don't, I think all of us will agree that, that we all need prayer during these times we live in. So, that was, that was really enlightening and, and really uplifting for me as a Commissioner.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. For, just to recap real quick to the Commissioners from, from the chair's seat, was that the Rayleigh Secretary of, National Secretary of Transportation did visit Wayne County in Goldsboro, looked at Union Station last week, and was very impressed in what he saw and the vision. We learned that same day that Fox would, the mayor of Fox of Charlotte would, has been nominated by the President to, to take his place. And we're very happy about that. He's chosen someone with that experience from North Carolina. The other item Thursday, as Mr. Mayo had mentioned, is the National Day of Prayer. We had Supreme Court Justice Paul Newby to drive on the other side of Raleigh, just to come in and pray for Wayne County and Goldsboro and the municipalities of the county for three minutes. I made his time to come and do that. We just really appreciate that. But in the last seven to ten days, I, I really appreciate the Commissioners going up and taking two-by-twos and going up and looking at Wayne County with a planned trip. We, I had mentioned to the sheriff that if it was so, that he could take two each and go up and look at Highway seventy, look at the interchanges, and look at transportation, and then look at one seventeen moving from Pikeville-Fremont down through, or Fremont-Pikeville down through Goldsboro and down to Mount Olive, and the importance of that and how that would be laid out. And then I asked the sheriff if he would entertain having the pilot to take us over the Progress Energy Duke Plant, Progress Energy Duke Energy Plant, correct? And to have us look at that and the ash ponds and how the, the river and all, and just how it separates. It's, it's interesting to see it from the air. And then, of course, the prison, looking at that, at the possibilities of that becoming a jail one day, if that comes to fruition. That's up certainly to the General Assembly to make that decision. And to look at solid waste and look at how our sales that we've, that you as citizens have invested in over the years, to have really a solid waste, a, a, a system that is second, really second to none. Wayne County has got certainly in its staff and its sales, its solid waste to be, is something to be very, very, very proud of, that we have that in our, that facility in our county. And with that, I also ask that the Commissioners stay and have their attention specifically, and I appreciate you doing this because I've heard from many of you, and how wonderful it is to see the agriculture from the air. This is the planting season for the farmers. This is the planting season for the farmers. And you can see the, how agriculture is laid out in, in Wayne County and how these farmers take pride in, in how they can run a straight road. And how it looks from the air is unbelievable. And we just, how important it is to see all of this from a thirty thou, well, we didn't go thirty thousand feet.
Yeah, I think we did.
Don't tell me that.
Mr. Daughtry thought it was.
We did come as close to a tower where I could've changed the light bulb. Let's just put it, and that was about five hundred or four hundred and eighty. I said, how tall are we, how tall is that? And he said, four hundred. I said, well, how are we? He said, we're four oh one. But, but I, I just really appreciate that and to, to be a part of that. That is in, in comments, but we'll, we'll move on from, from the committee reports and go into our unfinished business. Many of you here tonight for our number one unfinished business item, Wayne County Facilities Committee Recommendation on the Steel Memorial Library. Mr. Mayo is, is our chairman of our Facilities Committee. Before I go there, though, I don't think that Wayne County has had, since you've been here, Mr., Mr. Smith, a committee, committee. Is that correct, the Facilities Committee?
Not what I would entitle a working committee, no.
And, and this, this committee, the three of us have taken a lot of, of, a big look at, at a big picture. And this is the thirty thousand foot snapshot of Wayne County and picked out these facilities. And Mr. Mayo is our chairman of that. And we, we want to turn it over to him and to approach this, take care of this for us.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the Wayne County Facilities Committee consists of myself and Chairman King and Wayne Akoc. On, on May first, the Wayne County Facilities Committee met and we recommend to the County Commissioners and the county that the race, the contract between Ratio Architects Incorporated and Wayne County Board of Commissioners be terminated and further, and provided that the friends of the Steel Memorial Library pay the termination costs, which are estimated to be thirty-five thousand dollars. And the Steel Memorial Library project be constructed as design build and the request for design build proposals be initiated expeditiously. So, this is what the Facilities Committee is recommending to the Board of Commissioners, and I wanna put that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we, we recommend the contract between Ratio Architects and Wayne County Board of Commissioners be terminated, provided the friends of the Steel Memorial Library pay the termination costs, which are estimated to be thirty-five thousand dollars. And the Steel Memorial Library project be constructed as design build and requests for design build proposals be initiated expeditiously.
Motion's on the floor. And please allow me to not repeat that. I'm sure all of you have heard that enough now. So, with that motion on the floor, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Daughtry?
I might ask Lynn if she would explain to me what expeditiously means.
As soon as you can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Daughtry. Any other, any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayo?
Just as a matter of information, we have received, we have received an email from the friends of the library, the Wayne County Library Foundation. And it says that the Wayne County Library Foundation Board has approved reimbursing the county of Wayne thirty-five thousand dollars for the cancellation of the contract with Ratio Architects. These are the funds raised by the Mount Olive Steel Library Group. So, I wanted to make sure that, that the thirty-five thousand was, was, we, was taken care of and we can go forward with the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Any other discussions from the Commissioners? Mr. Carmody?
I would like to just offer a thanks to the participants of all the committees and so forth. We have the Mount Olive Library Group who worked hard to raise the money and worked continuously. We have the Regular Library Council Committee that I serve on with Ms. Phillips who's worked very well. And I've had an opportunity in the last few days to come in contact with the Library Foundation. And those are a group of folk that are highly committed to having the very best in libraries for Wayne County. That's a part of the culture of Wayne County. That's, that's, that's not maybe plowing and chopping potatoes, but it's something where you go and read and learn and become better. And our children have an opportunity to do that. I don't wanna single individuals out too much, but I would be remiss if I did not refer to our friend and colleague Jimmy Williams who have, at our request, has added himself, have become part of the Mount Olive Library Group and has worked real hard with us to look at all the things that would cause it to be hindered and therefore those hindrances to be removed. The day is a great day. And to my fellow County Commissioners, I say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carmody. Mr. Mr., okay, hold, Mr. Bell and Mr. Akoc?
I just wanna say, I appreciate the Mount Olive Group. I have never seen a group of people that work so hard. They did exactly what we asked them to do a few years ago. And I was feeling a little bad one time when I thought it was gonna be delayed, but I feel good about it now because you all really did a job. And thank you for your efforts.
Mr. Akoc?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the southern end of the county and the town of Mount Olive for being patient. But I thank you that we've made a lot of progress today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Akoc. Mr. Mayo?
Yes, I think, I, I agree with, with what everyone said here at Commissioners. I wanna take just a minute, though, and I wanna commend our county attorney, Mr. Borden Parker, and also our county manager and his staff. I wanna, I wanna explain something here that, you probably don't know. I, I wanna explain the process of how the Ratio Architect figure came about. I still have the note in my pocket where our county attorney, Mr. Borden Parker, called me and said that Ratio Architects, they want a hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars because that's what they were gonna make off this project if they followed it through. Well, we knew they weren't gonna get that. So, so, you know, Mr. Parker and I discussed it and said, well, you know, maybe, maybe if we just, we need to go back to them and ask them what that figure is because they wouldn't give us a figure until we terminated the contract. So, Mr. Parker called them back and we thought maybe we could get away with it, like sixty thousand. Well, lo and behold, Mr. Parker pulled his magic, whatever he did, and, and we came up with thirty-five thousand. So, I said all that to say this, this Facilities Committee is not, has not been in any way, shape, or form holding the, the Steel Memorial Library from being built. We are just doing what we should do and protect the taxpayers' money. And, and I commend, I commend our county attorney, Mr. Borden Parker, for his dedication and perseverance in getting this thirty-five thousand to where it's at. So, I'm, I'm well pleased with the progress and I hope the good Lord will allow us to, to get this project underway. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Any other discussions, comments? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Thank you again for being here and supporting us tonight. The other item now is Cambridge Systematics Incorporated Agreement. Some years ago, Highway seventy corridor commission was put together. The kingpin basically was Mr. Lee Smith and Mr. Atlas Price. They had a vision of Highway seventy. There was a firm that was hired, Kelly Horn did a five-year, they, they were under a five-year contract to put together a, a, an engineering process of ingress, egress, limited access, making all the changes on seventy. Five-year contract ended. And a year and a half ago, Mr. Durwood Stevenson was hired to be the director. And that commission still holds strong today. Still have five counties. Each county pays twenty-five thousand dollars to participate and have this commission to support, enhance the productivity of Highway seventy, as it really is, some Commissioners in the past has considered it the heartbeat of Wayne County. Transportation Chairman, Mr. Daughtry, has taken on the task of, of chairing the Transportation Committee and making sure that Highway seventy stayed as vibrant as it possibly could. That, that right now existing employment is about four thousand people, quarter mile each side, three hundred and twenty-seven businesses, twenty-seven gas stations. It's just a quarter mile each side from Johnston County to Moore County. It is a machine. But as it moves north and with our interchanges that you've heard so much about, Mr. Daughtry and, and the seventy corridor commission members, Mr. Chris Boyett, myself, Mr. Bill Pate, have pushed a study for NCDOT to come in and do what the governor is, is seeing as Main Street and taking these corridors and creating a Main Street where we can still enhance our, our county by, by receiving these sales tax receipts on these commercial properties and keeping our property values up. So, with that said, we have a, a part of this grant now that I'd like Mr. Smith to sort of take over from here and give, give us sort of an oversight of Cambridge and what they're to do and how this is to go forward. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. First, Cambridge was chosen, Cambridge Systematics was chosen. This group was chosen out of a group, I think, of three or four. There was actually an RFP put out by Representative the seventy corridor commission in review. This group has done work such as the I-95 study, so they're well, you know, well-known across the nation. So, we should get a, I think, a very good study. This is a, close to a six-month process by which they will study from Johnston County to Carter County the impacts. What's interesting is it's that they will look at what it will be and what it might not be if certain things occur. So, they're gonna give both sides of that, which I think is important to counties and municipalities along the corridor to make certain decisions, but also to give DOT some, I think, information and data that they can use and that we can negotiate with DOT to look at, do we or don't we? And I think that's important. So, it's a two, up to a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant through NCDOT. The contract is, the seventy corridor commission is an informal group. They do business through Wayne County. We manage their dollars. We manage their contracts, including Mr. Durwood Stevenson's contract and all the, everything that goes along with the lobbyists and those type things. This contract will be managed by the, by the county through the chair and myself and for the, the corridor commission. The, the contract for Cambridge will be probably just under two-hundred-and-forty thousand of the total. The remaining ten thousand may be used by the county to help reimburse the county for any costs that it incurs carrying out this contract. As, as soon as it is, if executed by the county, it's my understanding within the next thirty days they'll begin work.
Yes, sir.
Be glad to answer any questions if I can.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Daughtry?
I move that we approve the Cambridge Systematic Agreement expeditiously.
Motion's on the floor to approve the Cambridge Systematics Incorporated Agreement expeditiously. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pate?
Just a couple of comments. I think Mr. Smith was leading us through this and Mr. Parker for his little advice to strengthen this agreement because there were some minor issues in there that did need changing. His legal eye caught that and we got to agree with that. I think we need it again.
Thank you, Mr. Pate. Any others? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, that is unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Daughtry?
Before we move on from unfinished business, I'd like to address and make a motion regarding our Wayne County Code ordinance on the public hearing that we had earlier on the Wayne County subdivision ordinance. And I'd like to move that we accept the recommendation of the Planning Board and approve the proposed changes to the Wayne County Code of Ordinances as listed for section seventy thirty-seven and section seventy dash seventy-five.
Thank you, Mr. Daughtry. The motion's on the floor to approve the Wayne County Code of Ordinances, Wayne County Subdivision Ordinance. The, the motion's on the floor to approve that. Any discussion? Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna vote against that motion because I'm a firm believer that the County Commissioners can delegate authority, but they, they should not delegate their responsibilities. And I think that's what we're doing here now, is delegating our responsibility to a third party. So, and I don't think that should be. So, for that, those reasons, I will vote against the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, be six, one, six in favor, one opposed. Mr. Bell? Under new business, the downtown development, Goldsboro Development, I'm sorry, Downtown Goldsboro Development Corporation presentation, Ms. Julie Metz says special guest, Mr. Smith?
Yes. Thanks, Julie.
Thank you, sir. I just switched, switched over here.
She'll drive for you if you want her to.
Okay, very good. Good afternoon, Chairman, County Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today to share some highlights of activities and events that are going on downtown. As the county seat is important to us that you understand, we appreciate your presence in downtown and all the social and economic benefits that you bring forth to this area. Marshall, I wanna, first, I simply wanted to share with you an update of where we are at the city level moving forward with the Center Street Streetscape Project. As you're aware, in two thousand and six, the city of Goldsboro conducted the first ever comprehensive downtown master plan. And one of the major recommendations that came out of that plan in terms of a public investment was the complete and significant renovation of our main corridor. investment was the complete and significant renovation of our main corridor. Not only did the, were there many design flaws that prevented a safe and productive environment for the business community, but there were a lot of infrastructure needs underneath the ground that needed to be modernized. And so, we completed the first block in November of 2012. We're currently going through the construction drawing phase. Hired the engineer and landscape architect to plan the design for the next two blocks, which is the second phase. We hope to have the renderings or the drawings completed by late summer and we'll put that project out for bid in hopes that we'll have bids collected by late November and be prepared to begin construction in January 2014 with council's approval. So, that's where we are. The next phase will consist of two blocks as opposed to one, and we'll be sharing information as we proceed with that and get updates. Marsha? I do want to just convey to you the purpose also of the Streetscape Project. In many, many communities across the United States, there are very few like silver bullets to revitalize a downtown. One project cannot complete everything that needs to be done. But Streetscape projects, one done well, one done thoughtful with public input, are about the closest thing that you can get. We've seen experiences like that recently in areas close to us in Raleigh and New Bern and Salisbury, but some others, smaller communities across the United States have experienced similar results. And these are two very small communities with very similar projects. And the results of the return from investment to vacancy rates, you can see before you. But that's what we're trying to achieve with the Streetscape Project, a return on private, a return on our public investment with private investment, reinvestment, new business growth, existing business growth. And so, that's what our priority is and that's what we'll be working to achieve. Another project we've been working on essentially since 1999, 2000, with our partners at NC DOT is Union Station. And several of you were able to attend a recent visit with Secretary, United States Department of Secretary Ray LaHood. The primary reason for his visit was a visit extension from Congressman Butterfield to get a close-up personal look at two of our major infrastructure projects related to transportation, that is the Union Station Multimedial Transportation Facility and the Center Street Streetscape Project. Marsha? The Union Station Project really consists of several different phases and levels. There's two components and they're separated into these two components primarily because of the funding that we get from the federal level. The first component is an interior and exterior renovation of the historic Union Station Facility. Property improvements that will consist of a parking lot, landscaping, as well as amenities to support the facility. There's also a Streetscape Project affiliated with that project where it will make some rather less significant compared to the Center Street Streetscape Project, but aesthetic improvements along Walnut Street from George to the station and around the station to help visually and functionally connect that property and that project to downtown. And then, the other portion of this project is the Gateway Transfer Facility. And we've been working with our friends at DOT and the Public Transportation Division and FTA and Gateway to move that project forward. Originally, preliminary efforts got us to about a $5.4 million project. New estimates, we're at about $3.8 million. We're beginning the construction drawing phase with our architect hopefully by the end of this month, and we've already received nearly $1.7 million. Portion of that, a large portion of that was through appropriation from Congressman Butterfield as well as an FTA grant we received recently. And with the local and state matches, that's got us close to $1.7. So, we're right now a funding gap of $2.1 million. If we are able to get the award for Tiger Funds, which this part of the project is included in that, we'll be able to complete that project as well as Union Station and the Center Street Streetscape Project. So, as of last night, the council approved us moving forward with that approach. The applications for Tiger Funds are due June 3rd, so it's a very expedited timeframe and we'll be moving forward with that and keep you updated as well. This is a, this is a floor plan, oh, sorry, of the transfer station. As we completed the schematic design phase, it will be a huge upgrade and a much-needed one for the operations of the Gateway Facility as well as the customers of Gateway. If you have not seen the plans to date and you're interested in doing so, please let us know. We'll be happy to share those with you. Another project that we're working on is a residential infill project. The city of Goldsboro owned probably close to 85% of the 400 block of South Center Street as of about three years ago. And due to the master plan recommendations, we are, have pursued with appropriations from the city to purchase 15 small parcels of property so we could create a developable project to solicit a public-private partnership with the intent to create residential infill in this area. The city council has supported us moving forward with that project. We'll be creating a request for proposals from developers probably at the end of the spring, early summer. We've worked through a committee of public citizens to try to figure out what that vision is for that residential development. Originally, it was larger single-family homes, but we feel that our experiences in downtown, which we have 48 upper-story loft apartments that are all, have a waiting list to occupy, that they like the smaller footprint, you know, the more urban experience. So, we're moving towards a more dense development, not a huge apartment complex, but something like condos or townhouses. So, be looking for that to come. Here's a map of the properties in blue, what the city owned prior to moving forward with this, and the properties in orange are the ones that we acquired. We acquired those properties for less than $152,000. So, we now have control of that whole block and we'll be moving forward with that. Also, the Arts Council relocation, as you know, we're really excited to have them here. They've created an increase in synergy and energy in this area of downtown, and they will tell you that the move has been great for them as well. One benchmark that they have shared with us recently is that their sales in their market has more than doubled from the year that they, from any one-year period since they've moved. So, we're really excited to have them here. This was a great public-private partnership that was spurred by state funds at the Department of Commerce through a North Carolina Main Street Solutions Fund. They granted us $200,000. And to date, our requirements were to achieve eight full-time jobs, eight create or retain. We've achieved that and we have also achieved 22 part-time employee positions, and we've exceeded our required match of $400,000 of non-state federal funds, and we're currently at nearly $1.6 million in our return on investment of that $200,000. So, we're really excited about that project. Great to have the Arts Council downtown and everything that they bring with it as far as energy and public input and involvement. This is another picture. If you haven't been into the Arts Council building, it was a great renovation and all the upper story, they rent out some of the space upstairs to artists and all of them are rented out and the space is fully maximized. Just wanted to share some recent statistics. I think it's important to show the importance of being proactive, having a vision, being prepared to move forward with that vision. In, like I said, in 2006, 2007, we adopted a master plan. We also adopted a historic neighborhood revitalization plan. We've been able to convey that vision and those recommendations to people that are interested in downtown, and it's been very important and instrumental in our ability to return investment in downtown. The 400 block of South John Street, if you'll recall, two or three years ago, the city of Goldsboro acquired four lots. And prior to construction, the return to the tax base was $103 annually, very minimal. There were vacant lots that the city had to maintain, so not only was it not generating a lot of tax value for our tax base, but it was incurring, you know, reoccurring costs to the city tax dollars or taxpayers. So, with the construction of three homes assisted with self-help, now we have, we're generating nearly $2,000 annually on just those four lots. So, that's just one small example of the return on investment.
South John.
Mm-hmm. And also, just to share with you, the three-year period prior to the development of the master plan and the neighborhood plan, we report statistics each year to the North Carolina Main Street Center. It's part of our requirement to be accredited. For public-private investment combined in that three-year period, we just reached a little over $9 million. The three years post the master plan and the neighborhood plan and our ability to share that vision, we had a little over $33.5 million in a same three-year period. So, it's been very beneficial to us to have those plans and to continue moving forwards to making them come to fruition. And since 2009, we've added nearly 105,000 square feet of space back in the production downtown. These have been vacant buildings primarily, one or two vacant lots that have been rehabilitated or where there's been reconstruction. And these spaces were vacant for nearly, you know, four or five decades and hadn't been used. So, we're excited about that statistic because it shows that we're creating more density in downtown and thus more energy. Also, one recent project that we're very proud of, this is a great pay it forward story. The city of Goldsboro and DGDC worked together for several years to try to get property owners, this particular property owner, to do something with the buildings that they had neglected and were falling in disrepair. The city was very interested in improving the appearance of their rear lot of the new city hall and had gotten to the point they were seriously considering raising the buildings. There's five of them. But Mr. Gordon and Louis Maxwell decided at the end of the day to donate the buildings to the DGDC in cooperation with an agreement with the city. And the city decided to let the DGDC make this our new home. The nonprofit, I think it's extremely important to state, the nonprofit board took the 100% of the bulk of this investment. A BBNT loan enabled that to happen. They were prepared to make a $242,000 commitment, but as of today, I think we're going to be completed at about $200,000, which is making it about a $60 investment per square foot, which you can't do any better with new construction. Here's pictures of the property before when it was, when we accepted the donation. You see the interiors to the, on the top and to the right, the front and the rear exteriors as well. And here's what it looks like today. We just had our open house two weeks ago, and if you weren't unable to come, I extend an invitation, open invitation. We love to share the story. We have before and after pictures on a history wall upstairs, but it's a great facility. Like I said, we were able to achieve it at about $60 per square foot, and it's been a great facility for our use as far as employees and being able to demonstrate what you can do with buildings downtown. So, essentially, I just wanted to, also, I've been in your building for 15 years, the DGDC Dorch Park or Law Office Building on Walnut Street. The nonprofit DGDC has been in that building since 1984. And for those of you that might not know the story behind that, the way the DGDC got to be occupying that building is the Historic Association decided to invest in the renovation with the understanding that the DGDC could be located there. And essentially, you've been allowing us to stay there for free all these years. And I've been able to report that statistic as part of our Main Street efforts to the State Department of Commerce as well as the National Main Street Trust, reporting that based on the current market value that you've been supporting us at a $7,200 level each year. And now that we have moved out, I just wanted to share with you, I've asked the city manager if you could have an opportunity to continue that support in some form or fashion, and I've made a request in the budget. I also want to extend an invitation to you. The DGDC Board of Directors has recently adjusted their bylaws and their approach to membership. So, we have currently three representative positions within our board. And we'd like to, on behalf of the DGDC Board, I'd like to extend an invitation, Mr. Chairman, to a county commissioner of your selection. Want to take the time to think about it and maybe call me if you have any questions about, you know, the commitment and the meeting dates. I'd be happy to. But there's a position on the board for one of you if you are interested in doing it.
Thank you for asking us to be involved, Ms. Smith.
Sure. Thanks for your support.
It's a good report. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Ms. Metz? Thank you. Next item, Mr. Smith, budget amendments, if you would.
Yes, sir. I believe it was our finance office, there she was looking around. She's standing up. Pam Holt, she would come up and go over the budget amendments at this time.
Okay, we're going to go in the order that they're in your agenda package. I had them grouped today in kind of categories. In the first category, we're going to go over grants, and I have department managers here to talk about their grants. And the first one we're going to ask to come up is Charlotte Jenkins with Soil and Water. This is a $21,000 budget amendment.
Good afternoon. I'm Ronald Parks. I'm here representing the Wayne County Soil and Water Conservation Board, and we're requesting a budget amendment of $21,000 to transfer some funds from one account to another so that we can purchase a pickup truck to replace a truck that's out of age, is over 10 years old. And I think according to the county rules, after that, it has to be replaced. So, we're requesting that fund transfer today at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Are y'all going to vote on each one separately this time?
Let's do that.
Okay.
And, but then again, what's the pleasure of the board? You have this in your pocket. If you want to take each one, we can. It's certainly up to the board to do whatever. It's a pleasure. We can group them more so. We can go through them. If there's something that you want to question and have some questions on to help you, certainly those people are here. If, if she reads, if Ms. Holt reads something, there's no opposition or no concern, we can certainly move to the next and call that an approval till we get to the next one is however you want to do.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kromarty.
I would like to give Ms. Holt the opportunity to group the ones that she has indicated. We've had a chance to look through these and group those as she indicated, and if we have a concern, as you indicated, we could bring note to that, but otherwise, let her group those and we vote on them as a small group.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kromarty. Mr. Dottery?
Yes, as I understand, this first group deals with those funds that are from grants and not from county funds.
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Our next, within the grant category, is we're going to ask Erin McCullough, Services on Agent, to come up, and she has two, number 377 and 411.
This one. First one, 377, has to do with sequestration. As you know, different grants were cut, and I was told to cut my budget by this amount of money. What I decided to do was I took money away from my pilot projects, the newest ones that I started that there was no funding for initially, so you carve out money from your budget for it. So, since I had to cut, I'm cutting those and it's causing the least amount of harm. That is that one. And then, the next one has to do with what's called family caregiver support funds. That is number 411. It's $1,861.35. I'm just transferring it from salaries to office supplies. This category is for caregivers. This is completely grant money, no county match, and we are allowed in this grant to buy emergency supplies if needed. In this instance, there's incontinent supplies that are needed and we're going to use that money to purchase them.
Any questions? Ms. McCullough? Thank you.
Okay. Next is your hospitalization. I put this in here with the categories as grants. Well, do y'all want to vote on those two since we've got them in this order? I hate to get them out of order.
Okay. Mr. Pate?
I would make the motion that we go ahead and vote on those first two that were grants.
Motion's on the floor to vote on this. Are you asking for to approve these?
Yes, allow those to budget amendments.
Mr. Pate has moved that we vote on these previously mentioned as recommending approval. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed?
Okay. The next one is a hospitalization insurance adjustment. Now, I'll ask Ms. Sugai to come up and talk about this one.
Our hospitalization is a self-funded program, and based on that, there's two pieces that I want to make sure you understand here. As a part of our budget process, based on how the program's been used historically, we come up with an amount that we budget per person, per cost center for the year, and that's accumulated. And then, as different employees have dependents covered, we collect that from their monthly paycheck and that goes into the same fund. And then, we pay expenses out of that. An important part of a self-funded insurance is to have reserves in the event that something happens out of the ordinary. And what I'm asking here is that there be an adjustment. We did have some catastrophic illnesses within- We did have some catastrophic illnesses within some of our employees that caused our healthcare expenses to go up this year, so we're asking to move some money from this reserve that's earmarked for the Blue Cross Blue Shield and put it into the fund so that we could pay expenses out of that. And then, as a go-forward, next year, we have raised the amount that we'll be accruing per person to help replenish this fund. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Daughery.
What generally is in that reserve fund? What was the balance at the beginning of the fiscal year?
We have had actuarials come in about every two to three years. They recommend that we have three months premium, or three months' expenses in there. And the last time, it's like 1.6 million that's in that reserve.
And we're moving 1.2 million out?
Is that going to leave us a very low out?
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no.
You're moving it into that.
We're moving it into. What we're moving out of that is the 746.
You have a reserve fund that builds.
Okay.
But this is the, now you're having, is, think of it as kind of a working capital piece. You've got a piece that you cash flow on a monthly, a daily basis. We're moving that money out of that reserve fund that has been built out of the premiums into that working piece so you can use it. And because of the catastrophic of six to 700,000 cancers, heart attacks, those catastrophic illnesses has caused that to go up a little bit, I'm still not alarmed by it. Sounds like a lot of money, but it's still lower than it has been in the past. So we still, with our reserves and the overall reserve and what we're doing, we're still in pretty fair shape.
We are.
So we're leaving a reasonable reserve on it?
Oh, nearly a million.
We're still within our policy, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? What would the adjustment would be for 1314?
We're raising it. Now we're accruing 575 per member covered, and we raised it to 600 per month for each member covered.
What percentage is that, just off?
605.75, somebody.
How much is that? Do I put like?
Very little.
Very little, but it will replace that amount.
Five, seven percent, something.
Seven?
Two and a half.
Two and a half percent?
Yes.
Is that a trend?
It's not rea, oh, you're talking about raising that amount?
It wasn't quite alarmed yet, so.
Oh, no, no, no.
Yet, is it a trend?
It's not a trend. Actually, I can look at the utilization reports, and while for hipper reasons, we don't know specific employees, you can tell the treatment cases. And it's actually 10 lives out of the 791 that have caused these issues that are in some specific treatment.
Okay.
So I don't necessarily see that increase.
See, last year, we were actually in a building mode because people were healthy. We didn't have any catastrophic issues. So we're in a building mode. In fact, we couldn't even get companies to bid on us because we were lower. You know, they said, well, we can't make any money on you. So, but this year, it went up a little bit. It just depends on incidents with individuals, so.
Which was brought up in our health forum.
That's right.
Yeah, absolutely.
For jobs.
Absolutely.
Help their lifestyles and.
Mr. Chair. Interesting. Mr. Daughery?
Did I understand you state you've already increased the premium from the 575 to the 600?
That'll be the next budget year.
Recommend it. But you are at 575 now?
That's correct.
Yes.
I thought we were at 575.
575.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Would you like to vote on this one now?
That's the pleasure of the board. What's the pleasure, the board on that? Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve. Motion's on the floor that we approve this health insurance cost. The fund balance appropriate, $746,000. Any discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Thank you.
Okay, next we have the Health Department. Mr. Ken Stern? Ken, these are the ones they have in front of them. That one. Oh, these five.
All five of them?
Yes, right there.
Good evening.
Good evening. Number 395 is for a WIC program. That's a state-funded program, and we're asking to move $8,960 from lab salaries. We have some vacant nutritionist positions to fund the purchase of licenses for Microsoft Office 2013 for computers that the state is purchasing to support the new crossroad system that the state is piloting in all of the programs. And they've approved us to go ahead and move those funds to purchase those licenses. The reason why we want to do it that route is because if we purchase the licenses and get reimbursement from the state for that, we own the licenses, and when those computers go away and we virtualize, that we maintain those licenses and don't have to repurchase them when we virtualize. The next one is 396, Environmental Health. That's $13,698 that we received from the Division of Public Health because we reached 100% of our restaurant inspection just past year. So we get additional funding for that, and that money should be used to support the food and lodging program in our environmental health section.
Beware of the bills in the House and the Senate. That's going to affect the fees.
I'm aware there is. There are other details of that.
There's a bill. You might want to keep up with that, raising those fees.
Or allowing us to.
Yes, sir.
Charge. Next is, that's one for fund balance. That's not a, I'll just go ahead and go through them as they're stacked here. Number 404 is another one for the WIC program, and that's to, asking for $1,500 of fund balance to move into our temporary health services, temporary health services budget line. That's where we pay for contract interpreters and the use of the telelanguage. We use a telelanguage service to translate for clients that are non-English, non-Spanish speaking. We have Spanish-speaking interpreters on staff, and the usage of that has increased this year, so we're asking for additional funding for those expenses. Number 412 is for a minority health program. That is a grant-funded program, and we are asking to move some funds around to purchase program-related supplies for the minority health program. I don't know if you have the attachment of that, but there's an email from the Office of Minority Health, Division of Public Health approving that we do that. And the budget amendment, we submit to that for their budget to be able to move those expenses, move those funds to purchase those supplies. The next one, 414, is in our General Administration Program, and that is to request $400 of fund balance to go into our dues and subscriptions lines. And the reason why I have a shortfall there is the North Carolina Association of Local Health Directors decided after our budget went in place that they would fund a portion of the accreditation process because of being accredited, the Health Department is now mandated that we do so, get accredited, to get state funds. And, but they did pull the funding that was provided to counties to help with that process, so the Association of Local Health Directors decided to put some funds into that. So this is to offset that non-budgeted expenditure that we had earlier in the year. I think that is it.
Any questions on the others? Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of those five budget amendments. Motion's on the floor to make approval of those five budget amendments. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Thank you, if you may. Mr. President.
Okay, next we have a budget amendment from Solid Waste Department, Mr. Tim Rock.
We've got two budget amendments. The first one is we need to purchase a credit card machine for our office so we can run credit cards if somebody comes in to pay their bill. We actually have one in our outbound scales, but we want to put one in our actual office. We do have that. People come in, want to pay their bill there, and we're having to send them over. It's kind of inconvenient. The, and that's for, the next one is for equipment rental. And what this is, is we've got two of these machines there at the landfill, and we had some mechanical issues with one, and the weather in March kind of got us behind on our covering. And the state mandates that we cover every day when we leave there, cover the waste before we leave. So we needed to rent a piece of equipment due to having to do that. And we also knew that the state was coming in, we were having an inspection coming up, and we wanted to make sure we had everything covered. So that's the reason we needed to rent that machine. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote on this one because so we can keep them in their order.
I'm sorry, Pam. Okay.
Okay. This Solid Waste is recommending approval. Finance is, what's the pleasure, the board? Mr. Chairman, I had a question. Yes, sir. I make a motion with, accept. Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we accept this amendment, suggestions, or comments. Mr. Daughery, I'm sorry. Just a quick question. Is the rental over yet?
Yes.
Okay. That's an expensive rental.
Yes, it was. I agree. But it was, it's kind of mandated that we do that.
I agree.
And we had to do it. Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Akon?
Me and Mr. Rogers had discussed this at the budget meeting. Very rare for both of our pieces of equipment to go down at the same time, but it did, it caught us. That was the reason for having to rent this equipment.
Mr. Akon, any other comments? All those in favor, motion, pleasure, right hand. All those opposed? Thank you, if you may.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
And the next one I'm just going to go over is to one of your control substance tax, budget amendments for $1,472.20. This is one you see every meeting. This is for the Sheriff's Department. And that will be the last one in this category.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval. Motion's on the floor to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Thank you, if you may.
Okay, we're going to move into the budget amendments that have to do with payroll at this point. The next eight budget amendments total $1,940. We elected to do these all as a group because each one of them individually is less than $500. I will read them out. Services on Aging has one for $19. Highway 70, $128. Registered deeds, $325. Services on Aging, $413. Inspections, $230. Day reporting, $440. Finance, $10. Library, $375. They have various explanations, but most, I mean, they all have to do with disparities in budgeted versus actual payroll expenditures totaling $1,940 for all eight.
I make a motion with, accept. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion's on the floor that we accept the recommendations on the budget amendments. Any discussion? Mr. Akon?
Ms. Holt, is this directly or indirectly, or reason for this is the payroll, the serendipity?
I can't, I can't speak for each department individually because I don't have them here on these that were under $500. I can't tell you. It's just through April.
Okay.
They did not indicate on the budget amendment whether it was serendipity or serendipity.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Questions? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Thank you. That was unanimous.
Our next set also has to do with payroll, but we're going to take them one at a time. Okay, the first one is dental with the Health Department.
Evening again. We're asking for $60,000 in fund balance to fund our extra help in our dental clinic. We are currently trying to recruit a dentist. We've had a dentist vacancy now since this past August, and we've been using a firm called Dentemp to provide temporary dentists to cover our clinic and see patients. And we just need to move some money into that line to pay for that for temporary dentists.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
I've got a question.
Mr. Daughery.
Do we have budgeted for a dentist in this position, and we are replacing that with extra help?
Yes, we do have a budgeted position for a dentist.
That's not filled.
That's not filled, so they're not being paid. But based on the policy of the board, I'm requesting fund balance rather than lab salaries.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we.
Mr. Park? Motion's on the floor that we approve $60,000 for extra help from fund balance. Any discussion? I do, yes, Mr. Akon?
I just need a little more clarification on this. I just, if we've got a position open and we're getting 60, I don't, it's going over my head.
May I ask a question?
Sure. Mr. Kromarty?
If it'd be helpful, if extra help, the normal place was changed to accurately reflect what you may be doing. I'm just, I'll play on words here, but when I hear the discussion, I thought maybe extra help was a.
Line number 126, sir, is for our temporary help line. Call it extra help.
It is extra help, and this is coming from here. Remember, we're bringing this to you because we cannot, based on the board policy, we have to bring from a fund balance. We can't shift between line items. That's normally what we would have done, we would use, but in this case, you can't do that. So, you see what I'm saying? So this is the fund balance from that area.
I see where the technical layup is.
Okay, you're clear to that.
So there are follow-up.
Yes, I have a question. The $60,000, is that a trend of where you are today versus your vision for tomorrow, for the next year, 13, 14? How have you incorporated that with your budget request for next year?
Well, currently, we're, like I said, we are recruiting a dentist, and we're working with a dentist now that's out of, that's out of state, and she's working on her licensure so she can come here, hopefully start in July, and we can fill that position. And we won't have that large expense for a temporary dentist once we get a full-time dentist on staff. Does that answer your question?
Did you anticipate this?
Our vacancy came about.
In August of last year?
In August, after the current budget was already in place, yes.
So.
We did not anticipate that expense.
So when you put your budget together for '12, '13 in May of the previous year, then this came available, or this empty seat was in August.
Correct.
Three, that's 90 days it became.
Correct. We do budget some in the extra help line for high dentists that we have that come in and help us out, as well as temporary staff, dental assistants, and those kind of things when we have staff shortages. But this has been going on since August, and it is a high-dollar position, so it's not cheap to get a tech dentist. And we have moved money into that, into that line in the past to cover that earlier this year before the policy changed.
Yes.
Now we need to reach the fund balance.
Mm-hmm. Right, and just a follow-up comment is being on the DSS board for four, five years, well, four years, Mr. Pate serves on that now. I was given a tour of the dental department in the Health Department about the time you requested the budget for dentist, for this division or an area, that there was a lot of plans made for dental care through the Health Department. Is that plan still in place? Are you anticipating? Because I remember, we were, we were short on dental care, and this was put together as May of last year. So looking into the future.
Let me clarify a question. What was put together in May of last year?
Your dental.
Dental plan's been in place since 2001.
But you, didn't you add to the dental, well, see, the avenue? There were. But you, didn't you add to the dental, well, see, they haven't, did, there was,
all right.
Didn't you not advocate for more of a dental department in your budget planning for last year? And then we're coming here. So I'm just trying to get a feel for what your presentation was last week, from the Health Department.
Well, last year's budget, the 2011, 2012, 2013 budget we're currently in, was budgeted for the in-house dentist. At the time, we're, the Health Department was currently using an in-house dental clinic. And our dentist left in August of this past year. So the salary is not being used, and so we're having to use Dentemp's. This is just a precursor to your question. So what we're doing now is just basically asking for the policy to use this money to cover our Dentemp's until we can recruit our dentist in. Now, our plans with that is, is yes, the Board of Health, so far, they've been the thought, and my thought is to try to continue to provide dental help because we have a need. Primarily, we see adult need, but we also see a pediatric need for dental care. The issue we run into is our no-show rate at our dental clinic was getting exceedingly high, and it was becoming cost prohibitive. We were seeing a no-show rate of 40, and one month it got up to 56%. At that kind of no-show rate, we couldn't operate the dental clinic in a break-even standpoint.
Okay.
And my understanding was that when the dental clinic came into being, that the primary directive was that it not have to use county dollars, that it be self-sustaining.
That is correct.
And it wasn't, it was, it was at the time, but it was trending towards the possibility of not being self-sustaining. So our plans is to recruit a dentist and possibly look at revamping our in-house, but moving to a mobile, mobile dental practice. That is our long-term goal, or that's my long-term goal. And so far, we're getting support on that, and there's been, there's been a lot of discussion around that, and we're currently working on the business model for that.
Okay, that's, any more discussion on the motion? Mr. Kumari has made a motion that we approve this. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed? That was unanimous. Before we go any further, let's take a five-minute break. And let me, wait a minute. How many more do you have?
10 more pages.
About 10, 15.
Yeah, yeah, good many.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break and come back. We're going to change DVDs. We're going to take just a quick break, and then we'll finish, and then we'll have our public comments after that, and then we'll move on.